Okay, we're turning on the media here, the live.
Maybe we are. If you pound on it, it works. Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is seven thirty P M. on Wednesday, April twelfth, twenty twenty-three. And at this time, Mr. Johnson will give us the invocation and Mr. Schultz will lead us in the pledge, if you would stand please.
If you would please join me in bowing your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for our friends and neighbors with us today, as well as those watching from home. Thank you for the opportunity to do good work on behalf of the city and the many people who live and work here daily. And God, thank you for the many blessings you have already given us, both to the city and in our individual lives. We ask that you give us the courage, wisdom, and empathy necessary to do these good deeds. As we endeavor to do so, we ask that we always recognize that it is your will and not our own which should be done. In your name we pray, amen.
Now, I'll lead you in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, please.
Hawk.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Lynch.
Here. We have the minutes from March twenty-second. It keeps saying twenty-two, but I think it's twenty-three. Anyway, it's twenty-three. Do we have any changes? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Next, our business session. Any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
Reports of council committees, economic strategies and cooperation. Mr. Denon, this.
Yes. The Economic Strategies and Cooperation Committee met in the City Council Chambers of one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three at five P M. I presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mrs. Chelsea Baker, Economic Development Director, Mr. Mark Pittsick, city attorney, and Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee reviewed progress with the industrial development, specifically Project Crane. Number two, the committee noted the status of various development projects within the community and downtown area. The administration advised the construction of Kitty's Cat Fay was progressing. Number three, the committee benefited from a review regarding downtown events. Mrs. Baker noted the Main Street shop hop events had been scheduled for two thousand twenty-three. Mrs. Baker reviewed the rack cards that were reviewed, the rack cards that were distributed to the community. Number four, the committee reviewed progress with the commercial development. The committee noted interest from the community. The committee recommended granting a tax abatement for John Hinderer for a new car dealership location. Number five, the administration noted property annexations were progressing and discussions would begin on future land acquisitions. Number six, the committee noted that new business plaques were presented to Elevate, Yoga Room, and Unleashed. Number seven, the administration advised the committee that research was being completed on an issue pertaining to property near East Paint Street. Number eight, the committee benefited from a review of the Honda groundbreaking ceremony and Marysville visit with the Honda Group. Number nine, the committee noted an upcoming Honda event to be located at the Fayette County Airport on June third from eleven A M. to three P M. Respectfully submitted myself, chairperson, and Mr. Joe Denon, recording secretary.
Okay, thank you, Kendra. Did Mr. Denon make any mistakes you want to correct?
I think he did good. I'll move that we accept these minutes as read. Second.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Next, we have finance and personnel. Mr. Blair, you're up to bat.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance and Personnel Meeting held March the twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Finance and Personnel Committee met in the second floor conference room of one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Mr. Jim Blair presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Ted Hawk, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Ms. Kendra Hernandez, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mrs. Christina Collins, finance director, Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager, Mr. Mark Pittsick, city attorney, Judge Pontius, and Mr. Sean Remington, representing the Triangle Trail Committee. First, the Honorable Judge Victor Pontius addressed the committee and advised the need for a men's homeless shelter. Judge Pontius noted the cost of a home and McNair Presbyterian Church at the approximate cost of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The committee noted the possibility of full or partial donation. The committee advised that the matter should be further explored. Number two, the committee benefited from a report of the state's statement of cash for the month ending on February the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Third, the committee benefited from a report on the investments of the City of Washington Courthouse. Number four, Mrs. Collins advised the committee that reconciliation with local government services was progressing. Number five, the administration advised the committee regarding the need for a supplemental appropriation for the purchase of the new fire truck, as well as police retention grant and other matters. Number six, the committee benefited from a report on personnel issues given by Mr. Denon. Mr. Denon advised that the hiring process for the Police Department continued. The committee noted the need for four officers to be hired. Number seven, the administration advised the committee of the potential purchase of property. The committee recommended proceeding with the purchase of seven point four acres of property at the approximate cost of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The committee continued and recommended the purchase of fifteen point five acres of property at the approximate cost of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Number eight, the administration noted that Dee West had been hired for the administrative secretary position at the Fire Department. Number nine, the administration noted that Ricky Brown had been hired for the code enforcement position. The administration noted the upcoming retirement of Martin Renison from the Fire Department. Number eleven, the administration noted the open position in the water plant. And lastly, the committee benefited from a general report on the golf course. The administration noted that an adjustment to the lease would be completed. Respectfully submitted myself and Mr. Joe Denon, the reporting secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
You're welcome.
Any changes, discussion? All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it as read.
Second.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Mr. City Manager, what have you have this evening?
Thank you. We have a crowd, which is great. I can remind everybody about the fun subject of city income taxes. Roxanne and Debbie are there from seven thirty in the morning to four P M. If you have any problems, they will happily fill it out for you. In order to process your income taxes, you do have to have a copy of your federal ten forty, W twos, and all applicable schedules. You can also file, you can file in person, you can file online, you can, if you've put everything together, you can also put it at the night drop, right there where you put your water and sewer payments here, one oh five North Main Street, online. You have W W W city of W C H dot com, you go to the government button, and then the tax department button, and that takes you to a direct link where you can do everything online if you want to. They have been doing an exceptional job, Roxanne and Debbie. Business has been very steady over there. Folks, please don't wait until the last minute because it just gets frustrating for you and it's a problem. And we do have to cut off that line when they close for business at the end of the day. So if you got everything together, drop it off. Please file and get that done so that life does a whole lot easier. Would like to express condolences to Godwin's family. That was a tragic loss, and with boys that age, it's just a very sad thing. Godwin's obituary noted trees in lieu of other remembrances, and certainly we have sent flowers, but with your folks' permission, I have a conversation with the Tree Committee and the county. It runs in my memory, Godwin had remarked to me before about those London Plains that we plant quite a bit on. If we find an appropriate location for that, and we'll talk with the county and do that jointly together, if anyone's okay with that. Bit more pleasant subject. Folks, please remember to mow your grass. It's warm weather, it started to grow. If you don't, you get a nice friendly visit from Ricky, our new code enforcement person, who gives you a nice little piece of paper that reminds you to do that. And you don't want us to mow it. It gets expensive and it's just a, just a pain. So please mow your grass. Would like to thank the Rotary Club. Next Tuesday, they will be down along the trail off of, oh, the Kroger parking lot. You tend to get a lot of trash that blows off of Kroger's lot, so it gets away from people when they're trying to load it up in their car. And also, you get a fair amount of flooding down in that low area down there, which leaves behind all sorts of interesting things. So next Tuesday, instead of their usual Rotary meeting, they will be going out, and I will be with them. And we will clean that area up and get rid of all that garbage down there. And Service Department always helps us out with that by providing, oh, trash bags and rugs and the supplies we need to take care of that. But we will be down in that area, get rid of that eyesore. Again, it's that stuff, stuff gets away from people all the time down there, and that's always been a problem down there, not because of any lack of diligence by Krogers, it's just anything that gets away from people ends up down that low area. Also, on the twenty-fifth, I'll be going out and having a little chat with Union Township, that land planning firm that we have engaged about certain property that's of interest to be annexed to City Washington Courthouse. And would like to compliment the Union Township trustees for their cooperative attitude to the issue. We'll work out any practical concerns that we have and be able to proceed along those lines. But Union Township has always been incredibly supportive of development in our community, and it benefits everyone, and we are very pleased with that. And that concludes everything I have on my list.
You want to have a question for Mr. Denon? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Director of Finance is not present, but the city attorney is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to reiterate what Mr. Denon was talking about, trash. We have a great deal of trash that has accumulated a little there throughout the city. I hate to say this, but we're going to be having to file some criminal complaints for trash. So those criminal complaints could mean two hundred and fifty dollar fine plus up to thirty days in jail. So we would ask everybody to pick up their trash.
Okay.
It's all I have.
And you're mowing.
And we're mowing. Oh, by the way, we have, surprisingly, we have collected quite a bit of money from last year, regards to mowing. And it looks like I asked the Finance Department to give us some idea of how much we've collected into, through this state this year. We've collected twenty-three thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. So people need to mow their yards. That's just for the mowing. So it costs us a lot of money to mow, so we got to pass that cost on to people who don't.
We'd rather have the mowing than giving us money.
You're exactly right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Lynch, should the ordinance concerning chickens pass?
Yes.
I brought with me the license application for chickens and ducks and so forth, in which case it would be very nice to give Sylvia the first application.
We're going to do, so that'll be fine.
Okay.
I understand. We had no local residents or taxpayers sign up, so we are to legislation. And the first is less, under legislation previously introduced, is ordinance number two, two thousand twenty-three. It is third reading.
I move that we place ordinance number two to twenty-three on third reading.
Second.
Okey-dokey, discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
When I was a wee little lad, I was a kid at one time, it was my job to feed the chickens and the pigs, and I did it barefoot. And there were a lot of chickens and a lot of pigs. So I'm familiar with chickens and pigs, and I like chickens and pigs. And we're dealing with chickens right now. And I just got a note from Josephine. And it really put me in a corner.
Well, don't be chicken. Go ahead and read it.
It says, Mr. Hawk, please vote yes for us. With exclamation mark. Love, Josephine. And thank you. So I don't know what to do. Sounds pretty plain to me.
These pressure people, I think.
Well, I, I think you should become a sales lady. Your mom doesn't do too bad either. If there's anything I can do for you in the future, I'll be glad to do it. But I, I just can't change my vote. But it's going to go through anybody, so. But I do appreciate the effort that you put in and the hard work. I'm sure it's going to pass, and you deserve it, so that's it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Hawk.
No.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number two, dash two thousand and twenty-three, ordinance repealing, replacing ordinance number eight oh three, nineteen fifty-eight.
Move that passage.
It's not quite over, just a second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Christman moved for passage. Ms. Hernandez seconded. So we need a roll call.
Hawk.
No.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Now it's over. And now, Mrs. Call, yeah, absolutely. Mrs. Call, would you bring your two kids up here, please?
I can do that.
First of all, as a government teacher, I think they have learned some government during this process. But you have been so nice to give us things. Mr. Schultz and Mr. Blair have something for you. You want to give it to them? Don't go away.
Don't go away.
Don't go away. Now, we'll, those are made by the DECA class at the high school. And on the bottom, Mrs. Call, I wrote the date. And I hope that they'll put those up in their room, and as they see those, they'll remember that they had a little something to do with passing
The passing.
what I call the chicken ordinance.
Mr. Lynch brought those and brought them in.
Now, wait, we're not done. I think all of us want to thank you because you've been giving all of it, so not just Mr. Schultz and Mr. Blair. So you're going to need these for what they're going to give you. Okay? Now, Ms. Hernandez and Mr. Hawk think that those chickens laid some eggs. So can they put, you could go that way. They're same thing on both ends.
There you go.
Just stay on your side.
Stay on your side. What do you guys say? Thank you.
Mr. Johnson and Mr. Christman are thankful too.
They have something.
So I think they have something for you too. If you can reach up there, right down here. I think the chicken had some little peep friends. And may have laid a chocolate egg too. Now, if we want to get a picture with them, as soon as Josephine gets her peeps and all that, and Mrs. Call, if they can't have candy, I'm in deep trouble. Come up here, Josephine. Come on up. Come over this way, everybody, so we can get a picture with the gang, okay?
Yeah, we can squeeze them. I'll tell you what, Steve, you stay seated, and you stay seated, and I'll stay seated, and the others.
They can stand behind us.
Move in behind us.
All right, let's work.
Now, you got to look at Kelly out there.
Yes. All right. Okay, here we go. I'm going to have to say the count of three. I have to count the chickens. About to count the chicken bees. One, two, three. One, two, three. There we go.
I got to tell you, Mr. Lynch come up with this all ideas.
Well, I'm so pleased that you guys have been so nice to us. And you get to be the first person to sign up for chickens. Okay. The rest isn't as fun. The rest of you are expecting gifts, forget it. Okay, next is resolution number R twelve, two thousand twenty-three, second reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R twelve, two thousand twenty-three on a second reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R twelve dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into contract with RC Child's Company for the purchase of a Main Street cast aluminum base pole lane.
I'll move for adoption.
Second.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Next is resolution number R thirteen, two thousand twenty-three, second reading.
I'll move we put a resolution, R thirteen, two thousand twenty-three, on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R thirteen dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the city manager, Joseph J. Denon, of the City of Washington Courthouse to award a contract to Cox Paving for the two thousand twenty-three street alley paving program.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Resolution number R fourteen, two thousand twenty-three, second reading.
I move that we place resolution number R fourteen, two thousand twenty-three, on second reading.
Second.
Discussion.
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman, on what alley painting program is. They paint the alleys?
No, it's, when we made the ordinance, we call it street and alley. This is where you're not going to use that necessarily in an alley. There might be, occasionally you might have an approach to an alley where we do like a crossing area. But this is the folks that put down, instead of painting those plastic street markings that we like because they just last so much longer. And we do the street and alley paving program, and that's a separate contractor of a separate contract, so we just call it the street and alley paving, painting program.
Good question. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comment? Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R fourteen dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the city manager, Joseph J. Denon, of the City of Washington Courthouse to award a contract to Griffin Pavement Striking for the two thousand twenty-three street and alley painting program.
I'll move for adoption.
Second.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Next is resolution number R fifteen, two thousand twenty-three, second reading.
I move we place resolution number R fifteen, two thousand twenty-three, on second reading.
Second.
And discussion. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R fifteen dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into contract with Mr. Manhold for the purchase of a Manhold cutter and leveling system.
I want to move for adoption on that one. It was taken care of.
Second.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Next is our new legislation, and there is one item, ordinance number three, two thousand twenty-three, first reading.
I'll move we put ordinance three, two thousand twenty-three, on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number three dash two thousand and twenty-three, amending ordinance number twenty-six dash two thousand and twenty-two by providing supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Washington Courthouse, State County, Ohio, during fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, I just want to mention, before we start winding down here, some of you may not have been at a city council meeting before, and it sounds like we go through things really fast. We've discussed all these things in committee meetings, so we've pretty well had things answered, and that's why there's usually not a lot of discussions sometimes, but not a lot. And so I just wanted to explain that. And if it's an ordinance, it takes three votes before you pass it. That's why the chicken vote was on the third one tonight. And if it's a resolution, it takes two, two times, so it's the teacher in me. I'm sorry. Anyway, the next is what we call miscellaneous, where council members get a chance to make comments about anything they want to make comments about. And so I'm going to start at that. And so I'm gonna start at that end with Mr. Johnson this evening, what do you got?
Well, chickens have officially affected my personal life. I made the mistake of telling my girlfriend who was looking to move here about the legislation and it looks like if being a lawyer doesn't work out, I will become a chicken farmer.
Lucky you.
Ted can help you.
She knows how to do that.
Anything else?
No, that is it, thank you.
Ms. Hernandez, what do you got?
I'm gonna talk about Main Street Fayette tonight, so a couple of things going on. Membership drives going on and so as individuals, you have the opportunity to support us in our endeavors and trying to make sure that we have a live and lively downtown. And that's $25, you can go on our website at mainstreetfayette.com, www.mainstreetfayette.com. Or if you don't like that idea, you can always pop over to my store and I'll get you one. So I would greatly appreciate that if you're interested in anything that goes on downtown to support it in that way. Businesses, obviously, there's different levels for businesses, but it contains any option as far as membership into Main Street. And then the most exciting thing is the cupcake walks this weekend, so it's the first time ever we've done that. And it's the cupcake walk, which requires a ticket. Tickets can be purchased downstairs with, at the water counter, or they can be purchased online if you want to participate in the walk. Things that are, you don't need a ticket for is the cupcake eating contest. And we have Sweet Beets coming from three to five, which is a really good tribute band to the Beatles and they've been here before. So bring a lawn chair and just hang out with us for a while, so I'm excited. I hope to see, and it's gonna be beautiful weather for once, so yay!
Yay!
That's it.
Mr. Schultz?
Well, you know, I'd like to, what Mr. Denon said earlier, my condolences to Godwin's family, he was a very, very nice gentleman. If you ever met Godwin, you never forgot him. He was just one of those guys that was just, he came across very nice and he was always concerned about everything and everybody. And so he will be greatly missed in Fayette County, I guarantee you, so. And I want to congratulate also that your chicken, I guess, accomplishment, I don't know what you'd want to call it. See, all your hard work and you didn't lay an egg at all and it came out great, you got the golden goose, so.
I, I'm gonna miss your chicken, pardon.
We are not going to miss you. Matter of fact.
But anyway, I want to congratulate on that, so you know, so pick away. Thank you very much.
Mr. Blair, you have to follow that.
I'll try to bring us into some sense of organization here.
Go ahead.
I would really hate to be in the shoes of my esteemed partner here and be known as the only one that voted against the chicken ordinance. That's his legacy, that's what he'll always be remembered for. Thank you all. Thanks, everybody, for coming. I think as Mr. Lynch alluded to, these young people have got an early dose of what government's all about at the grassroots level and only time will tell how much they actually remember, but I'm sure they will remember thanks to the token to Mr. Lynch that you gave to these young people. But thank you all for attending, appreciate it.
I'll just say, when I saw in Mr. Pennwell's room those things, I thought I have to have those for two people I know. Mr. Hawk, I can hardly wait, what have you got?
Well, when we first voted on this, I was chicken and I voted yes for it. So now I've become a goat. From a chicken to a goat. I, I agree with the rest that had talked about Mr. Apalaya Godwin.
Yes.
He, he wasn't only a, a good person, but what he, what he achieved in having the position that he did, that, that was quite an accomplishment. From his background and, and getting to go to college and going through and mastering that. So he, he was just so young and it's a shame, but I guess that's life, but he, he had quite a contribution to, to our city and county. And he really has a great family too. His, he raised his kids. Was raising them and they're doing well and they're, they're accomplished also, so. I just want to give credit where it's due and that's all.
Mr. Christman?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, we got about a full house, hardly anybody even wanted to get up and even talk, so. That's all the talking, yes. Also, thanks to the Call family and those two children there for their effort in chicken law, whatever you want to call it. I guess I forgot the rabbits and the, whatever else.
Ducks.
Ducks, yes, I forgot the ducks, how did I do that? I got Affleck too. Also, Godwin was a nice person, he had raised a really nice family, his boys were very nice. And he's been an asset to the community and I was shocked to hear his death. I remember a few weeks ago somebody said he'd been ill. One of my customers came in and they were totally shocked, wondering if I knew what happened. I said, "All I can tell you is what was in the paper." And there was a lengthy article in there, a lot of compliments from people around the community. Let's see, it has to be something else, what else I gonna say? You know what, I forgot what I was gonna say. I've been sitting there thinking about it for a long time. Anyway, thanks to you folks, thanks to everybody that came. Oh, well, that's.
Thank you, Mr. Christman.
I start taking notes.
I just also had about Godwin, I, I think all of us in one way or the other got to work with Godwin on something. And he, he was, I agree with Ted, he has come, you know, made amazing accomplishments in his life. But I also had the pleasure of teaching Blaze, his oldest son, who some may remember was even elected governor of Boy State, which is really difficult to do. And that tells you a little bit about his kids. And Gabe, his younger one, is a great kid too. And he never, I'm talking about Godwin now, never missed a basketball game or an athletic event they were in, unless he was out of town or couldn't be there. But I knew there was some problem this year because he was not at any of Gabe's basketball games and I knew there had to be some health issue because he wasn't there. So anyway, his family obviously is gonna miss him, but so is the community. And so he has been a great contributor. The other thing I want to mention has to do with taking things for granted, okay? I've been thinking about that a lot lately. And last Thursday, about 3:30 in the morning, I thought I was having another heart attack and so I had my wife take me to the hospital. And the thing I'm talking about taking for granted is I am so pleased and thankful that we have a hospital here. Yes, they're not Mount Carmel, they're not OSU, they're not all those things. But 21 and a half years ago, they saved my life and I had a heart attack. And the other day on Thursday, they convinced me that it wasn't my heart again, it was another problem. And so I am, we take things like that for granted, but it's so important that our community has that facility. And then I went over to Adena in Chillicothe, where my Easter present was having my gallbladder removed. By, and I say this for a reason, my doctor was Dr. Keebler. I don't know if he made these cookies. But that's why, that's what it reminded me of. And according to him, my gallbladder could have been put into the septic stuff you were talking about. It was in pretty bad shape, he actually said it was yucky. And I said, "How long did you have to go to med school to come up with that term?" But anyway, I'm thankful for, I did, any hospital, I don't care who, which hospital it is. You can find things wrong with it and you can complain about it and all those kind of things and I'm sure when I get the bill, I may complain about something. But I'm glad Adena and our hospitals here and they took great care of me and here I am. And so I just think we take things like that for granted until we need them and we shouldn't do that. It's great to have them in our community. So having said that, somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman? Yes.
Lynch?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you for coming.